I'd like to nominate John Edelen.
Okay, we have a nomination for John Edelen.
I'd like to nominate Jim Kriegen.
We have a nomination for Jim Kriegen. Any other nominations? Okay, so we will start with the vote for John Edelen. All in favor, please raise your hand. You have one, two, three, four, five. Okay, all in favor of Jim Kriegen, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Okay, John Edelen, President, Board of Education. Next, we will take nominations for the Vice President. Can I have nominations for the Vice President?
I'd like to nominate Jim Kriegen as Vice President.
I have a nomination for Jim Kriegen as Vice President. Any other nominations? All in favor, please raise your right, any hand. And it's unanimous. Okay, thank you. At this point, I will give the oath of office to the President and the Vice President. Please repeat after me. Please raise your right hand. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York.
and that I will faithfully discharge
and I will faithfully discharge.
the duties of the office
the duties of the office.
of President, Board of Education.
of President, Board of Education.
Thank you. Sign that and just return it. Jim, this is number five, so I'm hoping you're going to remember this by now, right? Please repeat after me. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
that I will support the Constitution of the United States
that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of New York
and the Constitution of the State of New York.
and that I will faithfully discharge
and that I will faithfully discharge.
the duties of the office
the duties of the office.
of Vice President, Board of Education.
of Vice President, Board of Education.
Thank you. Please sign that. And at this time, I will turn the meeting over to the President, John Edelen.
Hey, thank you, Harvey, and welcome, everyone. I always seem to be sitting out here in the cold. I will continue to stay here. I'm not going to ask for a game of musical chairs. I've played it over the last two weeks as we've traveled to Alberta, Canada, and back. Anyhow, so, welcome. We have an agenda before us this evening. I, in the future, will probably ask that the agenda be moved and seconded as an approved action, so we can move forward, but since we haven't had that opportunity tonight, I'm going to deviate from what will become my current or future practice and just go with what we see here and thank Superintendent Dade and his staff for putting this together for us this evening. So we've done the pledge, we've done the oath of offices. I think at this point, we have come to opening remarks from Superintendent Dade. Please, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I will keep my remarks brief. We are excited to share that we started our first day of summer school and E S Y today, along with numerous camps throughout the district. So the district was back abuzz with activity, but we're really excited to kick off our summer with our kiddos in our buildings, from basketball camp to trainings for various other sports, drama, and academics going on, so we're really excited. Hope that everyone was able to stay safe in our storm last night, and for those that are still dealing with that, we offer our ongoing assistance in any way that you need, any way that we can support. So looking forward to an enjoyable rest of the summer, and I'm going to turn it back over to John.
Thank you, Terry. Next on our agenda, item foxtrot, recognition of visitors. Before I open the mic up, let me just remind everyone that the Board of Education welcomes comments from the public. Each person wishing to speak is asked to speak into the microphone, identify themselves, and respectfully limit their comments to three minutes. There'll be two opportunities to speak tonight, one right now and one at the end of the meeting. We are going to limit the current open session to 30 minutes if we need it, and I remind all speakers to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, and statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. Persons wishing to discuss matters involving individual district personnel or students should present their comments and/or concerns to the superintendent during regular business hours. With that, I open the floor mic for any public comments.
My name is Kelly Cassie. I am a resident on Shadowwood Lane. I came to make comments regarding the capital project in relation to the multi-sport facility. Congratulations to those of you who are new. You probably don't know who I am. I've come to many meetings and spoken on the topic in relation to an impact that the multi-sport facility is going to have on my property and my two neighbors' properties that abut the high school property. My property line is literally 40 feet from the fence around the track, and I have requested plans, current plans for the multi-sport facility. I want to say three weeks ago. I'm still waiting for those plans to be emailed to me in order to understand the impact that the loudspeakers and the lights are going to have on my property. I've been to numerous board meetings, spoke numerous times, I've met with some of you to express concerns regarding the facility and how close it is to our properties and how much of an environmental impact it is going to have on us as taxpayers in this district. I find it very frustrating to see in the board agenda that the capital project will not have any significant adverse environmental impact, when in fact, I live on a property where the noise level does not really raise above 30 decibels. The loudest noise that we encounter on our properties is lawn mowers. And so to have a multi-sport facility situated literally 40 feet from my property line is very disturbing. I reached out and asked if you, as a board, now, some of you are new, so you haven't seen my emails, but as a board would consider possibly moving the multi-sport facility further away, perhaps down where the softball fields are located. I was told that there is not a large enough footprint to house the multi-sport facility there. I am in fact in possession of a plan that was formulated as part of the initial discussions for the facilities committee, which in fact does situate the football field down in that footprint and relocates the softball fields up adjacent to mine and my neighbors' homes. So I, once again, am here to request in person that you consider that there is in fact a very significant environmental impact on my husband and myself, on my neighbors who also boarded the property, on my property value. I don't think that any of you would want a multi-sport facility situated 40 feet from your property line, especially with the intent of having numerous sports played through the fall and spring seasons. It's not just a matter of a few night football games. It's a matter of football games, it's a matter of soccer games all day Saturday, it's a matter of lacrosse games in the spring and track meets in the spring. This is a significant impact to me as a taxpayer in this district, and it's very frustrating to read that this facility is not going to have an impact on me, when in fact, I have come to numerous facilities committee meetings and numerous board meetings and stated that very thing. And I don't think it's fair that those of us who live adjacent to the high school should be subjected to that because, I don't know, it's the easiest plan, or the football field is already there. So I'm coming to respectfully ask that you consider moving the multi-sport facility further away from our homes so that we are not impacted. I've asked how loud the loudspeaker system is going to be. I haven't gotten an answer on that. I was told that the speakers are going to be situated facing away from my property, but I can't imagine that 100-decibel speaker system is not going to impact my, my home environment and my yard. And so I, I know that none of you would want to be subjected to that every weekend, every Friday night, every Saturday in the spring. And so I'm asking you to please consider this alternate plan that does in fact exist that would at least mitigate the noise and the light problems further for my property. I'm also concerned, and I've expressed this in email, about the artificial turf and PFAS runoff, because everyone around the high school receives our water from wells. And I know that there's an underground containment system. That's fine with normal weather. Yesterday, we got two to three inches of rain in one, in one storm. I'm not convinced that significant weather, such as hurricanes or the like, are going to be managed by this underground drainage and containment system. And I would like some sort of guarantee that the runoff from this artificial turf is not going to contaminate my only source of drinking water via my well. So I have copies of the plan. If you would like to see the alternate plan that does in fact exist, showing the footprint will fit down by the softball fields. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other comments or concerns from the public? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, recommended actions, appointment of I will take this as per document. Is there a motion?
Remove.
Second? Thank you. Hearing no discussion needed. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passed. Thank you. Next item, other recommended appointments. I will take this as per document. Is there a motion?
Remove.
Second?
Okay.
Thank you. Discussion?
Discussion.
Yes, Bass?
Thanks, John. Item, where did I lost it? Yeah, D, letter D, attorneys for the district. Is that a competitive process for that? I mean, what have we done to suggest hiring this specific law firm?
Bass, thank you for the question. I'll refer to Terry and his staff.
Yeah, I'm not sure how long, I mean, how many decades Honeywell has been with us, but we've rolled them over year to year, not hearing any concerns or requests from the board to do otherwise, so.
But, I mean, there was no discussion about it, so, so far.
Harvey, I don't know if anything different has been done in the past.
If you'd like me to just weigh in here. The services for an individual, like legal services, is considered professional services, and it is not required to be an RFP on an annual basis. As you see here, we typically do roll it over. At any one point in time, the board can make a decision to go out for an RFP, but the nature of a professional service is based on expertise, not just the lowest price.
Can I move that we table this specific appointment for further discussion?
I would strongly advise against that. I'd just possibly bring it up for further discussion at another meeting, but have them in place. In the meantime, I just, our district not having
So we don't have a gap to, not to fund it?
Correct. That would not be good for the district.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Richard?
So, and thank you for the clarification. When was the last time we had an RFP for our district attorney? Do we know that?
I'd have to check. I'm guessing probably somewhere around four or five years ago.
So maybe instead of just, we extend it for 90 days, just to, so we can table it and discuss it, moving forward?
I was going to ask, my experience with RFPs, I don't know if 90 days would be enough. However, do we, are we locked in for that full year? Is there, is there a clause that we will be in trouble if we decide we want to go through an RFP and change? I don't know if we do, but, you know, are we, are we bound by that full year, or is there an out clause?
That's why, I mean, I was suggesting that we table it, but to Terry's point, what can we do not to have a gap? Because we don't want to have a gap.
You can't. So if there's no real issue, we just want to, we want to evaluate and look at the RFP. That's one thing, and we can take our time to do it. If there's a real concern or an issue that needs to be discussed, then I would want to know what is our penalty if we were to change mid-year. That's all. Because I don't, you can't go without an attorney.
I think Christina's right about that. We don't want to have a gap. Anyone else want to chime in on this? Christian?
So I agree with that. I don't think we want a gap, and so my position would be to continue with Honeywell for the current year. However, one thing that I would like to see is, you know, if we maybe, the nature of the contract, because I think it would be helpful if our attorney was at least occasionally present at our board meetings, because it's a source of counsel. And I know my experience with other districts, that often happens. And I think that would help us be informed, at least when there are certain issues before the board, so that we can decide those issues. And I think that would be kind of, it would be helpful to maybe discuss what is the nature, what's inside the contract, and what we can expect from legal services, whether from Honeywell or something else in the future. So what I think that, what I would recommend is that we vote on this now for this year, but I think this is something that we can think about and address over the coming 10, 12 months.
Thank you, Christian. All right, hearing none. Let me just add to what I've, I've heard, as it pertains to the appointment. I'm not sure how many of the board members have seen the actual contract as it pertains to this appointment. I think that would be useful for us to, to review and then be able to decide from a position of knowledge. I understand, Bass, the notion of wanting to make sure we're getting the best deal. If I, if I am misinterpreting your, your discussion point on this, and the best way to do that is to put it out for bid and get an RFP, is that what I understand? Your concern? Or is there a concern in terms of, of another matter?
It is, it is part of my concern, yes.
Okay. So, and I think if I could ask a question of Harvey, who has great experience and expertise in the field of RFPs, right, request for proposals, what, what would the typical turnaround time be for such an endeavor, for professional services such as this?
Probably take about a month to get it out on the street and give them an opportunity to submit a proposal. From that point on, it would depend on the board, how they'd want to review and determine, whether it's committee, administration, but that in and of itself will take a little bit of time, probably no more than another month.
So to Christina's point, it would be 90 to 120 days, possibly?
That, that could be done, possibly.
Possibly, or, or longer, I guess, depending on your level of response. I don't know how many
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Terry, you have a point?
I just, I just think the fair thing to do, Mr. Honeywell, if he was here, would be pretty surprised that this was a point of conversation, so I, I like Christian's recommendation of, we have not heard a significant concern that would cause us to deviate from approving this for the current year, but that doesn't preclude the board from going out for an RFP in a timely manner that allows a deep dive in, in review and a decision. But to have even a mid-year shift, I would strongly, strongly advise against that, strongly advise against that.
Thank you for that, Terry. Oh, Christian?
Just, I disagree with Mr. Dade on this.
I'm sorry, could you?
So my recommendation is to be clear, I would, I think, make the contract for the full year. I agree with the mid-year change. There are many things, as a teacher, I know that many things come up in the middle of the year, and to be without legal representation even for a short period of time is, is not desirable. But I think the point is that we have time to think about what we want as a board, and whether it's with Honeywell or anyone else, and I'm not suggesting that I, I know of anything else, it's just that, is there, are there's a need for legal representation or expertise in other areas, and I think we have a long year ahead of us, and in case we have too short of a meeting, perhaps we can tack that on.
Okay. So if I could just recap what I've, I've heard, the last RFP for the legal representation was four or five years ago. The process to do another RFP would be somewhere between 90 to 120 days for the board to be able to, to review and take a recommendation from Terry and his staff. There are no objections in terms of performance from our current legal team in place, and that we have a motion before us right now, and we don't have a counter motion to consider an alternative. That being the case, and I'm giving, I'm looking down the row here, it's funny, trying to get eyesight, I know we're, I like the horseshoes somewhat better, because I can see everybody, and being at the far end, I just want to get eye contact with everybody before I close this and put it up for a vote.
John, can you tell me what that motion is again?
Well, the, the motion is multifaceted, but as I understand it, what Bass asked for is on the other recommended appointments, item number D, attorneys for the district. He, he had a question regarding that. Instead of carving that out and passing the rest, I, I kind of kept it all in one bundle, thinking that might be an easier way to pursue, but if someone is willing to extract that, or wanting to extract it, seeing if it could be moved and seconded, I'm happy to do that. But I'm not hearing that's the case.
John, if I could just interject for a second?
Hey, Harvey, thank you.
I just want to mention something to think about. Honeywell Law has been with the district at least 20 years. There's a tremendous amount of institutional knowledge, and that which they do for us is dynamic, it's ongoing all the time. I think it might be another path if perhaps some board members are looking for something different, or they have an issue with one of the services or types of services they're providing. Maybe the best thing might be to meet with the attorneys and really have a meeting of the minds in terms of what the board might be looking for. If it is a complete change, you know, that's certainly at the discretion of the board, but we haven't really fleshed out what the, the issues are with regards to the law firm that we're using for over 20 years.
Thank you, Harvey. I think that's an excellent way forward, so we could pass it or move forward with this resolution. And as a follow-up, let's, let's think about how we can go about engaging them as a board, and look at the schedule to find out what would be a good time for us to, to have that type of conversation. So without any further discussion, let me close this and say, all in favor of other recommended appointments? Item number two?
Aye.
Say again?
All in through L.
Yes. Yes, the whole, the whole resolution.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Good discussion, everyone. Okay, next item, number three, designations for the 23-24 school year. I will take this as per document, with designations Alpha, Bravo, Charlie, and Delta. Is there a motion?
So move it. Second.
I have one question, and this, Terry, I'm sorry, I got back from Alberta, so I wasn't able to, to contact you. I got back today, so. Anyhow, regular monthly meeting dates, are these in line with what was established last year? And does this supersede the current method that we, or previous method we were following with work sessions and monthly meetings?
Yes, this just indicates the regular monthly meeting dates, not the work sessions. Work sessions will still be in place.
Right, so the schedule that was put in place by, before is still intact?
Correct.
Yep, thank you so much. All right, any other questions? Nope, great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Great. So passed. Next, item four, authorizations for 23-24 school year. Again, as per document, authorizations A through M. Is there a motion?
Remove.
Second?
Second.
Discussion?
Item M, I'd like more kind of clarification on those prices for lunch and breakfast and...
Harvey?
Sure, I can speak to that. So a couple data points. These lunch prices are pretty much in the middle of Orange County and Laboring Counties as well. Our food service director, Amy Bishop, surveys this. She also, in conjunction with myself, we look at how the year has gone, what the situation is, and what we need to do to at least break even. Food service is not part of the general fund. It is a self-sustaining fund that if we lose money, we, we can no longer sustain what we, we offer the children. So these prices are based on her analysis, and I've looked over it, and basically, if you compare where we were last year to where we are this year, it was an increase of 25 cents for breakfast and lunch.
It's, it's a little bit below, I guess, with the price increases in the supermarkets recently. I mean, that's why I was asking kind of, what's the method really behind those prices? It's, are we going to break even with these prices, or is it supported by the state, or...
The, the intent is, like I said, to minimally break even. It's very difficult to know, because you never truly know how many children are going to be buying lunch every single day. You know, it's, it's like a restaurant. You gotta, you gotta try to entice and, and offer them the best that they're looking for, and I think they've been doing a very good job. It's just that what we've been faced with is not so much the deviation from how many students are buying lunch as much as it is the inflationary factors hitting the food service.
Thank you. All right, any other questions or comments? All right, so just to recap, we're on that item A through M. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passed. Next, item five, other appointments. Let's take this as per document, the recommended, recommended actions, A through Papa. Can I have a motion?
Remove.
Second?
Second.
Christian?
So, John, so several of these, there's not just approved, where there's people from our board to pointing to the Orange County School Board's legislative liaison. We want to discuss or... Do we want to discuss, or do we want to take these out? So we have someone that we know who wants, from our board, who may want to serve on these positions, as opposed to, let's say, the Committees on Special Education, which are, you know, make up some of the other ones under these, the full section.
Excellent point, Christian, thank you. So with that as a segue, do we have any interested parties in terms of the delegate and alternate delegate to the Orange County Board Association?
Is there more information on what that commitment requires? Am I supposed to know that?
So...
Or maybe we talk about it later.
So Margaret Quinn was our, our past representative. Unfortunately, she's not here to, to give us a rundown. I do believe they meet some, with some frequency, whether it be quarterly or monthly, I'm not that sure. Christina? Terry, you know?
Could we table it for the next meeting? Perhaps we find out, and then we can come back and have volunteers or something?
Of course.
A, B, C?
A, B, and C, yeah. Just for, I believe that the Orange County School Boards meets monthly. It's not mandatory to attend, you don't have to be the liaison. If you're not the liaison and you want to attend, you can. I think they're still doing a mix of some meetings are virtual and some are in person. I attended a virtual one previously, so it's just, you know, school board members from throughout Orange County. That's the short version, but I'm sure we can dig up some past emails and send it along to the new members.
And I believe the New York State one is once a year to the convention, and...
Yeah, so number, or number, letter B.
Letter B.
You did that last year, Brendan, right?
Uh, yes, I was actually the alternate, but yeah, it's only in October, that's the only responsibility. And then the Legislative Liaison, you are on the tab for a trip to Albany, in the best time to visit Albany, January, and that's like a two-night affair. And then maybe some virtual meetings in preparation.
That was a, so I, the Legislative, that was just one day last year.
Well, you could have gone two days, Jim, and you chose for one day wisely.
Yeah.
But yes, the event, the Capitol Conference is one day, they have like a dinner the night before.
Okay. The, the Orange County School Boards, Karen Meyer, set up meetings, so as far as for item C there, the Legislative Liaison, I did travel up to Albany in January, February, whatever it was, the best time of year to go to Albany. And she had scheduled meetings with Senator Scoofus, and also with Assemblyman Ikis, as well as other assembly members, you know, that represent Western Orange County. So I just attended the, the two meetings for our two representatives, and it's just a way to meet them in their offices and, you know, share the concerns of our school districts. So I solicited concerns from the, the members of the board and from Mr. Dade to bring to the representatives in Albany.
Just since we're discussing, I would be interested if there's no one else to be the Legislative Liaison for letter C, in case, maybe I don't know what I'm volunteering for, but I would be interested in doing that if, if no one else is.
I'm interested in B, either delegate or the alternate, either one.
Okay. So we're a little bit dynamic here tonight, so, so anyone interested in A? We have interest in, in B and C? Okay, Carl, thank you. And so we have a resolution here, recommended action. Any objection to adding Carl to Alpha? Alternative delegate? Any volunteers for that? If not, I'll be the alternative, the alternate?
I'd be happy to serve in that, I just want to make sure that I could...
Oh, you just need more information?
Yeah, I just don't want to overcommit, but as long as it's not every month, I'm good. I could be the alternate, I'm sure I can commit to that.
So, so why don't we do that, and we'll just move this forward, so we don't get stuck in the process?
John, on A, B, and C, I mean, we've expressed interest, but can we maybe hold off on voting for this in case anyone decides they want to do this, and we can have a discussion, we can vote on it in the August meeting, since I don't think there's anything pressing on any three, and then it'll allow us to move on to the, the other items under this section.
So that is a requested amendment to this action. Is there a second?
Okay.
Fantastic. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Just a question, John. All in favor of the adjustment, or all in favor of the motion?
Yes, so, so, thank you, Louis, so just to make, modify what we're doing here, we're extracting Alpha, Bravo, and Charlie from tonight's recommended action. We will, we will do it next time we meet in August, to give people more time to learn and, and, learn and, and consider their, their own commitments and interests. And since I believe that has passed, we then have the remaining other appointments of item five. Are there any other items for discussion for numbers Delta through Papa? And I will give everyone a few more seconds to review those. And so just as everyone's reviewing, just to be clear, we've taken out Alpha, Bravo, and Charlie and deferred it for next time, and what's before the board for vote right now, under number five, other appointments, are appointments Delta through Papa. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion passed. That brings us to the consent agenda. The consent agenda permits the Board of Education to make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may do so by indicating that, and that item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issue. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda as submitted by the Superintendent of Schools, items two through 16. Are there any items that someone would like to discuss separately from the consent agenda? Christian?
I would just like to pull 15 and 16 just for clarification.
Thank you. Anyone else?
John, number three for clarification, which I think I already received, I just want to make sure I got it right.
Okay, so right now I have three, 15, and 16. Any other items? Okay, so let us do this. So we have a consent agenda for items two, four through 14. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passed. All right, so let's go to item number three, personnel actions. Carl?
The creation of the clerk, the clerk position and the clerk typist. Now, I did speak, I had a chance to speak to Terry a little while ago, and I was just concerned that the elimination, or the, of the clerk typist would just take that out of the school altogether. And Terry assured me that that's not the case. And I did, the second question I asked Terry if this was a union position, and he acknowledged that it was, and that the union was fully aware of what was going on, which was important. So I was just concerned at the fact that if we abolish a, a position like that, clerk typist, I, that's not something that you just, that doesn't mean that's for one person, that actually affects the entire district. But according to our attorneys, Terry, they were okay with that. And I just, I would just ask Terry maybe to check in with that, with the Orange County personnel, just to make sure that we're doing that correctly. I have no problem with the clerk position. I say do it, and I say the clerk typist, just leave it open. I think that's the safe bet, but I'll leave that up to Terry.
Yeah, so just for their clarification, it's really a personnel bookkeeping that we're approving tonight, so in my explanation to the board on Friday, this is an individual that's moving from a clerk typist position into a typist position, so you'll continue to see a clerk typist and typist move forward to board for approvals. This doesn't eliminate that for perpetuity, it's just what this individual is moving from one position to another.
Terry, if I could also add, the, to just piggyback what you said, the elimination of this is a specific position, it is not eliminating it in the recognition clause of their contract.
To Harvey's point, are, is the elimination necessary in order for this wax-on, wax-off to occur? Is that, is that the seamless way to, to go about doing this?
Yes, it's consistent. This question was raised last board meeting when we abolished positions for federally-funded teachers, so just think of it as a bookkeeping, to keep our personnel bookkeeping exactly the way it needs to be reflected for our current reality. We didn't lose the individuals when we abolished the federally-funded positions, we moved them into other slots in the district. This is the same exact thing happening with this individual, so to be consistent, and with the advice of Orange County Civil Service and our attorneys, this is what we believe we should be doing.
I don't want to oversimplify this, but I read it as a title change.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion for personnel actions?
Terry, this person that's going to be filling in, and I don't want to make a big deal about this, it's a clerk's job, okay, but I just want to make sure that, you know, six months from now, we're not facing a, a union issue or something like that, where, you know, somebody's going to be working out of title or something like that, right? So, so the clerk position, okay, they're going to be working within that description, correct? And they're not gonna, it's not going to be something where a few months down the road, they're actually working out of title, and then they would complain about that, right? That's not an issue here.
Yeah, she's going in eyes extremely wide open, because she's filling a position that currently exists at the middle school, so she knows exactly what the role is, and it's that of a typist.
Any other items for personnel actions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Okay, takes us then to items 15 and 16. I'm gonna, I'm gonna group them together. Christian, is that okay, since they're very similar in nature? Just a timing difference. Open up for discussion.
Just to begin, I think there's a question for Harvey. So these are two separate resolutions, but they are for the same student and for the same transportation. One, from my reading, is a summer session, and the other is the regular school year. And my, my clarification was, is there any reason why they're power mentee, that these have to be separate resolutions because of the separate sessions?
Yes, because with regards to the State Education Department, each one of these is actually a separate contract with the parent.
Sure. Okay, so we have items 15 and 16, I'll take as per document. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passed, thank you. All right, brings us now to new business. Item one, discussion of board committees. I will open up the floor for discussion.
I...
Basque?
Yeah, I did serve during my first year of my term on the policy committee, and I remember, last year, Brendan, the board president asked us to email him with our interests, like choosing which committee we'd like to serve on, and to indicate whether we'd like to chair the committee. I did choose policy, I chose facilities, I'd like to remain on both committees for this year as well. Now, when it comes to selecting the chair on each committee, I'm not sure how we're going to go about it this year, so maybe I can stop right there.
John, if I could make a suggestion? I think, because, especially because we have three new members, it might be helpful to, instead of jumping right into everyone showing their interest in certain committees, we just have a discussion as to what those committees are. Some may be coming in, they don't really know how much work each committee would be in, sometimes that does vary. You don't want to sign up for, for committees that would go beyond your bandwidth, so perhaps we start with just a run-through of, of what the committees are, and then we put a, an action on the table for our August meeting, something that we can align around about, you know, maybe we'll choose them in August. I just wanted to make sure that all the new board members understand what their choices really are.
John, I...
So that's, that's fair, Brendan. I think what we have before us tonight is a discussion item, it's not an action item. I think your, your points are valid in terms of having board members more aware and knowledgeable about the different committees. I think that's, that's important for us to move forward, but I just want to be clear, we are not taking any action, and I am not soliciting any volunteers for this as it is a discussion item, not an action item.
Sure, I mean, yeah...
I understand that, I, I want to be sure that that's where the discussion goes. Without form, it might just go into people signing up for committees, and I think that, you know, we should put some form around the discussion, and perhaps that begins with someone taking the lead, I defer to you, to explain what the committees actually are.
Perhaps if a continuing member who was on one of these committees last year would like just give like a summary description of each committee, and I believe we have at least one person for every committee.
That's very valid, absolutely. I mean, I, all the comments we heard, especially Brendan, what you suggested, right? I mean, talk about each policy, each, each committee is, is good. I think we should also wrap up the discussion tonight by, maybe John can tell us how he's going to go about appointing members on each of those committees, so maybe can do what Brendan did last year. But again, I served on the policy, I think I misspoke, I don't know if I said facilities, that's not the case, I meant visitation. So I, let me talk about policy. I, we met three times a year, and I can tell everybody that the majority of each meeting was taken time-wise, effort-wise as well, by reviewing the existing policy. I mean, Terry set up a system, very efficient, very effective system, where each meeting, he takes a, like chunk, he revises everything, edits everything, sends those revised and edited policies to the members of the committee well ahead of time, allowing us enough time to review and comment, and we come to the meeting, as I said, three times a year, and discuss and finalize kind of the, these, these policies, our existing policies. Again, it just happened that myself, I suggested adding new policies, this is still kind of ongoing, we haven't reached a conclusion yet, but I believe, again, serving on that committee, I, I didn't see why, after you go through all the policies one by one, if you see that here, there is still something missing there, I don't see why you can't suggest like adding a new policy, or modifying an existing policy. a new policy or modifying an existing policy for that matter. So it is a very important committee, as every other committee would be. And really, I enjoyed serving on it. As I said earlier, I mean, I'd like to continue in that role. Visitation, I also served, but I'd leave it to somebody else to talk about visitation.
Thank you, Bass. Anyone want to talk of visitation committee?
I'll talk about it.
Richard, yeah, go ahead.
So one of the committees I served on was the visitation committee. The role of the visitation committee is to walk through, observe the schools. In November, the committee walked through all five of our schools in the district. We observed classrooms, we walked through and saw the facilities and Walter helped us and walked us through those rooms and parts of the building. We also had an opportunity for, I think we called them, or Margaret called them, open chats, which I thought was great, where teachers and staff could come in while we were in the buildings and chat with us and give us their thoughts, their concerns, questions they had for the board. And we would bring them back to administration and try to work collaboratively to, you know, bring everyone together. My understanding going into that committee, when I first started, was that we would go through the schools twice a year. So I would, you know, if you're interested in joining, I would say, you know, two or three days in October, November, two or three days in, I would say, April or May, the fall and spring visits. That's how this committee works. I know we met a couple of times after the visits as a committee, which was four of us to discuss our findings and to come up with a report. I know we, I don't believe we have presented a report yet for that, for the last November visits. Or maybe we did, but that's how that committee works. And I would also like to be part of that committee again if possible. I really enjoyed being part of it and, you know, building relationships with our teachers and staff in the schools. I think it's really great and I would even be in favor of expanding that committee and trying to reach our staff even further in any way we can.
Thank you, Richard. I also served on a visitation committee. It did suffer from some spurts and stops and the like. If there's one committee that I think the visitation could look to in terms of how it's organized and structured and performs is probably the audit committee. The audit committee has a charter. That charter is very explicit in terms of its composition, of its purpose, of how it goes about, its process. I would think that as we evolve and make our governance stronger and we strengthen it, we look at not just the visitation committee having a charter, but also these other committees of the board having charters that get into not the weeds in as much as explicitly stating what the role, the purpose, and the composition of that committee is. Again, all these committees are a way of the board to have, how shall I say, a look into oversight in specific areas. So we could all do it together or we could kind of delegate, delineate the labor, distribute the labor in a way that we can rely on each other and what we're seeing to come to the full board and provide a report. So I think maybe my experience in the visitation committee suggests that there's a way that we can enhance our overall board process by looking to expand into providing charters or scripting charters. And maybe that's a thing that we could talk about next time on that. With that, let me just move on to another.
John, I would add relative to visitation. I spent a couple of years there as well. The history of that visitation committee started with Common Core because the confusion and the pushout for Common Core in its abrupt fashion in August to be implemented in September by New York State. A lot of feedback happened and the visitation committee was born there, just to kind of step into a classroom to understand how is being instructed. The only thing with visitation I would caution on is you're crossing over into the teacher's world, their contract world, and I would make sure if you, a charter would be instituted, it's aligned with their contract as well or it's received by them as well. I wouldn't want to breach it.
No, that's a great, that's a great point, Louis. All that we do, we need to make sure that we're in compliance and not violating any law or contract which has the same effect as law. Thank you for that.
A question for Louis. My understanding, just looking back through old minutes, is that the visitation committee was originally called the curriculum committee. And I think in other districts, it has seems the same function as that, where they call it curriculum committee.
Personally, my experience with it, I was on visitation my first year, it was not called anything with curriculum then. It was a visitation committee as far as I ever knew it. And again, it was teachers who, it was coordinated with teachers who volunteered to invite the Board of Education into their classroom, three members, not the group of nine, three members into their classroom. Just for a snapshot of what that day may be, it may be a math lesson, maybe it's science. I know that in my first year, we flighted STEAM and how it was applied in the elementary level. And then you saw a snippet of how it was applied in the middle school level and then the high school level. It was almost like in one visitation, in one visitation, like Richard said, in a three-day period, when you visited an elementary, middle, and high school, you've almost got a snapshot of STEAM throughout, you know, six or so years. So it was kind of refreshing, but that's the background I know of the visitation committee.
And just to piggyback on that, Louis, you mentioned two words that I think are really critical to setting expectations, what the visitation committee would be, that by invitation, you know, the teacher would have to invite you in and you're there to observe. You know, it's not as if you get access to the building and then, you know, you kind of become a teacher evaluator, you know, and you're going in like a superintendent would pop in perhaps and evaluate what's going on in the classroom. It's really not that. You have to, there's, I think one of the reasons it's difficult to schedule more than one visit is because there's so much legwork of trying to get as many teachers to buy into and to agree and then schedule times to bring them into the classroom. So just as you go in and evaluate whether you want to sign up for that, just know that that's certainly a part of it, the legwork to actually secure those invitations.
Yeah, I think that's a fair point. And just to get back to what Christian was saying, as a quick pause, as we're looking at these committees, there's a tendency to kind of think of it as this is what we got. What I encourage all the board members to do, especially the new ones who are joining us for the first time, is to think of not what we got, but what we need. And are these committees, the way that they're described, the way that they're organized, is that the best way forward for us as a board to perform our role in terms of oversight? And I don't want to spend tonight talking about it. I just want to plant that seed because Christian is the farmer there with that idea that, but are these committees that which we need to be effective? And if they are, great. And if they're not, which ones might we consider adding going forward for this year? Okay.
So John, I think you answered my question. These are not standard Board of Ed committees. These are specific to Cornwall, born from the board saying or someone's suggestion. There's not like a New York State Board recommendation of what the committee should be.
The only one that I'm aware of is the audit committee, which is very finely defined in the statute.
And policy. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
I do really like the idea of a charter or setting objectives so that we're clear on what success looks like and we know what our boundaries are and our role is. I think that would be helpful for me as a new member regardless of what the committees are, so I know what I'm driving towards in terms of expectations all around.
Okay, thank you for that, Christina. So any other, Jim, I know you're the chair of the audit committee. Do you want to briefly describe the activities there?
I think you hit it in all of its glory, John. I would just, maybe I'll add to what you said about it, is just the main functions are really, we have external third parties for both internal and external audit, you know, with regularly scheduled meetings, external audit in the fall and internal audit in the spring into the summer. So those are kind of the most important functions. We've recently undergone RFPs for both of those positions in the last two, three years. So they are, you know, I think we're very set with the vendors there and they're, you know, under Harvey's fine leadership of the financial department, we have not, you know, had any reason to have additional meetings, extra meetings. There haven't been any issues or problems in our external audits. You know, our audits from our external third parties have reflected that.
Great, thank you, Jim. Facilities committee. Anyone want to take that on, Louis? Thank you.
Yeah, so facilities committee, it's a hot committee lately, but only because of our new bond that got passed, you know, our multi-purpose athletic complex and the work we're doing in the school systems. So it tends to be a hot committee. It's with board members, community members alike. Walter plays a part in it. Some of the building heads play parts in them. It's a big committee, it's a great committee. We meet regularly. Fall of 2021, I think we met once every two weeks, only because we were grinding to get something approved to put in a vote for the public in May and we backed our timelines in. So sometimes you have to grind on it and that may be, that may be with the upcoming year with, you know, the work that's going on. We may have to meet to discuss something and approve something. But in general, you discuss the current state of the facilities overall. You, you know, talk about five-year plans, you talk about the building condition survey that has been performed, you discuss that, how that's being applied. Yeah, I mean, if I missed something, John, you were there as well. It's a good committee.
Yeah, very important one.
Any question? Yeah, no doubt. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer for you.
And I think going forward, I think people will have a tendency to think the facilities committee is done, but I don't think that's the case.
The work is just begun.
Exactly, exactly, Louis. But very important committee for us, especially with the upcoming issuance of the capital bond and the like. Okay, thank you, Louis. How about communications committee? Brendan?
Yeah, the communication committee meets, I would say we meet and then we also host events. So the meetings are really just to plan the different activities. So we tend to meet early so that we can plan what the full year of activities will look like. When I say activities, I'm referring to public forums. Over the last couple of years, those have really been dominated by the capital project. Even this past year, we hosted a capital project update, sort of the where are they now of the capital project genre. And then when it gets to budget time, that consumes all of the oxygen in the air. So that's really April and May. So it's, at budget time, it's not just scheduling public events where we present budget information to the public and receive, you know, questions live, but also producing some of the content online that we share through, you know, various channels, Facebook, et cetera, through the district school messenger, essentially just trying to educate people about the budget in as factual and dry a way as we can. And then there's some other little stuff that comes up throughout the year, you know, newsletters, stuff like that. But it's always, each year, it's a little bit different depending on what the year requires. And like I said, the last couple of years has been capital project dominant. This is the first year in a couple, we'll probably really start to extricate ourselves from that. But it's a committee that, you know, it requires a bit of work. So anybody who signs up, I would say, and I will certainly be involved again this year, I would just say get ready to, you know, bring ideas and a willingness to see them through.
Thank you, Brendan. You've done human work as it pertains to getting the word out and communicating and engaging with our community. And I think, as you rightfully noticed or mentioned, as we look forward to this year, maybe there's an opportunity for us to consider other things that we can engage and discuss with the, more of a pushing information or pulling information from the community versus what we've been doing, which is pushing the information to the community. But I ask all the board members to think about community engagement in general, but how we might be able to do this in a different way than we've had in the past. Because I think we've been very target and mission focused in terms of the capital project and passing budgets and the like. And I think we have some tailwind that we could take advantage of thinking other things to communicate with the community on. So next time, as a homework assignment, let's share those thoughts together, okay? Takes us to the next committee, the new member handbook committee. What I'd like to do on this one, because the new members all have received that new member handbook, is see if anyone is able to provide any feedback, positive or negative at this point? Okay. The purpose of that document is to help you, as a new member, transition to be a, hit the ground running as a functioning and contributing member of the board. I know you go through your specific state training. Most of you probably went to BOSI's for that recently and then there's some financial online training that you also will do. This new member handbook attempts to consolidate many of the items. It may be redundant in some cases, but what I think it's trying to do is show the new members the Cornwall way, how Cornwall goes about it, right? There is no, how shall I say it, right way. There's many ways to get to the same destination. And the way Cornwall is currently organized is, I think, elicited in that handbook. So if you have any pointers or things that you find as you're going through that would improve that document, please feel free to share. And if you want to serve on that committee, you know, great opportunity to contribute. Bass?
John, yeah, thanks. Just to add to what John mentioned, from my experience last year, you go to the governance training, I think everybody did so far, then you go to the fiscal law. During those two meetings, especially the governance, because I took fiscal after I got my book, the green book I call it, you notice that we do things differently a little bit. I mean, you might notice, might have noticed already that they might have said something at the governance training that we don't do. So I would again encourage anybody who would serve on those committees, on that specific committee, I should say, new member handbook, look further at, as John put it, our way to doing things. Are you in full support of that or not? So just bring it up and let's have a nice discussion about it.
Thanks, Bass. Okay, so, oh, Richard, go, sorry.
Just, has every new board member received that handbook? The new board member?
I have not.
No.
Okay, so I'll say last year I received it like a couple of weeks before I got in. I would just, I ask that because when you go to these training courses, you get their handouts and their booklets. But I would definitely encourage you somehow to get the new member handbook for Cornwall. That was very helpful to me. So I don't know how you can get those, but I think it would be very beneficial. Thank you.
Hey, Richard, thank you for that. I stand corrected or sit corrected. I made an assumption that as part of the onboarding process that you all receive those. I will make sure that we get them to you. That's my commitment to you on that. Thank you. Last item for these committees, scholarship committee. Louis, can I hit you, this is your brainchild and it's turned out to be just fantastic.
Yeah, no problem. So some years ago, maybe two years ago, two years ago, we floated the idea of a scholarship committee to offer a student, a graduating student, committee to offer a student, a graduating student, a scholarship that's funded by the Board of Education. If approved, if the scholarship committee is approved, that we, all the board members agreed to donate $100, and that funds a scholarship for a student, a deserving student of a $5 scholarship in the spring. So the scholarship committee met, oh man, again, two years ago, we vetted out our processes, what we thought at the time, we still believe, it's not changed, what accolades we want the student to have, what goals we want the student to achieve. And Joe Debold and the Guidance Department, his team, they use those, that rubric to find the best student, and the students apply for it, and they get it. And that's it. So it's put together, it's established. Not much action has happened to it, other than me asking everybody to please give us your money. And that's it.
Hey, thank you, Louis. It really is, especially the videos. Once you see the videos, you'll just, your heart will swell and it's just a beautiful thing. Okay, so on this topic of committees, some homework assignment. But first, let me say how I envision the process to be going forward on this. Next time we meet, we will discuss the committees that we have and any committees that we might want to add, okay? As well as, I'm asked for volunteers for those various committees. Again, the purpose of these committees is to delegate the work, the oversight work of the board. So I don't want to be a burden. If you'd like to express, you know, your willingness to be on a committee, I accept you stepping forward and embracing that. If we have too many people for one committee, though, I don't want to assign anyone a committee that they don't want to be on. So if you could come to the meeting prepared with the committees in terms of your first choice, second choice, and third choice, I think we could make sure that everyone gets their first and second choice in the event. And I don't know if we've ever experienced it, I'm looking at Louis right now, but I don't think we've ever experienced a situation where we had too many people stepping up, right? So, but just to think of it in that regard, I want everyone to pursue their passion, and I think the committees is a great way to do that. In terms of who will chair the committee, I intend to think about it. I'm currently leaning toward deviating from past practice where the president would assign the chairmanship of a committee to a certain person. I think once we have the committees set, I would ask those committees to self-determine. That's where I'm leaning to. But in the end, just understand that the board, the board will appoint the committee members, and the board, the board, in my view, will appoint the chairman of each committee. That's how I see us moving forward.
Just to be clear, John, that is how it operated last year as well, and I believe the years before that. It was, I think the president always reserves the power to appoint should nobody step up, but it's almost always the case that somebody does volunteer to chair, and that's just how it has operated. Just, I think it works well. But just to clarify that, I think that would be a continuation of how it's run.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, Brendan, from past practice. I know the Audit Committee is a self-determining body, as I believe we've done in the past. And I have served in that capacity for a number of years as the chairman, and I believe it was the committee that determined who would be the chair. But be that as it may, for next time, we'll figure out that. And as I said, I'm keeping an open mind. If you have any input, please feel free to reach out and share with me your thoughts on that. Okay, so I think that takes us, and I thank everyone for that discussion. I think it's helpful. And I hope a level of collaboration and cooperation will be continued throughout our subsequent meetings. That takes us to the next item, which is recognition of visitors. I'll open the floor mic to any members of the audience who would like to make any comments. All right, which is great. No comments, which takes us to comments from the board. I'm at one end, I will start at the other end, and we will work our way from right to left as you're facing the stage. So that is, I think, Jim?
Is that right? Well, unless you want to save me for a second to last.
I'll start with you for now. We'll get the seats ready right next time.
That's fine, because when you speak first, all the good talking points aren't already taken, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, John. So just, you know, I hope everybody's enjoying their summer. And, you know, I really echo Terry's sentiments. Obviously, there's a lot of folks in our community who experienced property damage and loss yesterday, neighboring communities as well. Highland Falls was really hit hard, much harder than Cornwall was. So I just wanted, you know, send my thoughts to everybody who is feeling the effects of yesterday's storm. I know several people up on this dais are experiencing problems with water. So look forward to working with everybody this year. Welcome to the new board members. Congratulations to John, and I look forward to working with you and look forward to a productive school year. Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. So, yeah, Jim, I would just echo everything you said regarding the difficult times that a lot of our neighbors are facing. Certainly, we can just hope for the best as far as help coming in the next few days and weeks. To the new board members, congratulations. It's always fun to see others get involved in this mess that we call public service, but I think all of you are entering it with the right mindset and the right priorities. So look forward to working with you. And to Jim and John, I think, as you know, and you'll certainly find out, that being an officer is more work than anything else. So I wish you luck with your new unpaid promotions. And to the board as a whole, I just think that tonight was a nice meeting, and, you know, the longer and longer we maintain a collaborative streak and really a willingness, eagerness to work together, I think the better that we will function and perform as a whole. So I will certainly do my part to make sure that we continue that collaborative spirit the entire year. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Carl?
First, I'd like to thank Brendan and Lou for their year that they put in as the president and vice president.
Four years.
Four years for Louis. And I just wanted to thank them. I think, you know, it's a hard job. Brendan and I didn't seem to see eye to eye on a lot of things, but at the end of the day, he's actually done a great job for the school district. So Brendan, I want to thank you for making that transition into a board member as smooth as you can. And I think, you know, and Lou, I didn't get a chance to see you during the year and everything, but I just wanted to thank you as the vice president. And I hope that this year moving up, we're going to do the right thing here. We're going to do better for the Cornwall School District. I do have a couple of questions, and if they're not appropriate for answers now, by all means, let me know. I will be forwarding some emails that I receive from parents and stuff. I do have some major concerns with some issues that I just briefly want to bring up, not looking for answers tonight. One of the things I noticed was the football team. Terry, maybe you can tell me about that. Is there a reason why our football team pays $2,500 to NEMA? Is there a legal reason for that? And if there isn't, then maybe we should consider like saving that money and letting these guys use our football fields here for practices and stuff like that. I don't know, I'm just asking. I got, when I was running for the board, we were hit, just like Brendan warned me, that you're going to be hit with a ton of emails, a ton of phone calls, and you're going to be expected to solve all the problems. And I just know that that's not possible. However, I did promise people that if something was brought to me, that I was going to make sure that it was brought to the board, to the proper people at the board, starting with Terry, and go from there. There are some major concerns that I see, and I'm going to forward these emails, like I said, to all of you. And I hope that we can address them. There seems to be some issues with some of the sports, in particular baseball. That's something that I'd like to see get cleared up right away, if we could. And I just, the other thing is, it's special needs. I've heard this over and over again, that we're just not there yet, and that's going to be my goal this year, is to make sure that, or we all, I think, want to do this, make sure that we improve with these kids that need this extra help, however that might be. These are things that I'm going to be bringing up constantly throughout the year, looking for answers, and I hope that we can improve on all of this stuff. And I just, you know, and I'm looking forward to working with everyone, despite what you might hear. I am looking forward to working with everyone.
Thanks, Carl. Christian?
So to start, just congratulations to John and Jim, and also sincere gratitude to Louis and to Brendan. And the district is better for everything all four of you have done for the district. And it leaves, you know, a high standard for us newbies to live up to. Just a thought, one book that I've read since the election is a book called Great on Our Behalf by A.J. Krabill. And it's a book about, you know, effective school boards. And while some things may or be less relevant to us, I think the takeaway message that he repeated very often, I think is important for us to think about. And he said that school boards are effective when they spend half their time talking about student outcomes. It helps focus the mind, but it also keeps us, you know, focused on our core mission. And I would recommend this book to anyone and my colleagues. In fact, I will commit to buying you a copy if you'd like. And the second thing is something that as a teacher, I used to teach a public affairs course, and it said all public policy problems break down to three Ps: policies, people, and problems. And we're told that not because, you know, there's anything special about the letter P, but that very often we think people are the problems. And we were, the guide said, you know, you want to emphasize this because no single person or group of people is a solution. That's what a policy is. And no single person or group of people is the problem. And I think that's good to keep in mind, that we can think of problems as too much of something we don't want, or too little of something we want. And that might be a good framework to think about some of the issues that will come before us this year as a board. And I do sincerely look forward to working with everyone here, board members, administrators, and most importantly, the people in the audience. Thank you.
Thank you, Christian. Christina?
Thanks. I echo the gratitude to Louis and Brendan, and the congratulations to John and Jim. It is a lot of work, I recognize, and I don't think people often realize how much of your personal time is, I don't want to say sacrificed, but is poured into serving the community. And thank you for that. Also, genuinely want to thank folks who helped me to get to sit here today, not just in terms of the election, but in terms of understanding what this entails and, you know, what this role really is as it relates to serving the community, the students, and the teachers. So I'm grateful for that. You know, picking back a little bit on what Christian said, in my experience, things only are accomplished through people and through relationships. And so I am really looking forward to developing those with this team of folks here that we may not always see eye to eye, but we are the ones who are going to help move things forward, both as board members, working with administrators, and also, you know, working with the community. So I am really looking forward to that. And finally, I would like everyone to take out their pens and pencils, because I want you to mark this date in your calendar. Saturday, July 22nd, we are going to have our very own production of Frozen Junior the Musical here at the school, Cornwall Central High School. There'll be a show at 11:00 a.m. and at 2:00 p.m., so if you're an early riser or you'd like to go in the afternoon. The great thing about this program is it is including students from all five schools and highlighting students from second grade all the way through 12th grade and even recent graduates. So it's really a nice community effort as it relates to the focus being on the younger kids, but some of the older veterans of the arts participating as well, and not just onstage, but also backstage and mentoring the younger students and the like. So I encourage you all, this is run by John Hines and Denise Carter, who are heavily involved in the arts, you know, during the school year as well. So it's in the air-conditioned building. It's a hot day, come on out and enjoy the fun. So I look forward to seeing you all there.
John, I don't want to speak out of turn, but I just want to say a ditto.
I think you are.
And I was supposed to say that, and thank you, Christine. You have a position on the Communication Committee if you want it.
You left me something to say, so I'm grateful.
Thank you, Christina. Louis?
Thank you. So yes, congratulations to our new appointments tonight, new board members. Get ready for a good ride. One bit of advice I will give you that I picked up over my four years of experience and also witness, just a lot of times, a lot of times, when you have a question in your head, hey, why is the district doing that? There's a really, there's a 99.99% chance that there's a good reason. And it exists. It's just, ask the question, because it's there. I've seen, you know, other conversations in the street where it's, hey, you should do this, you know, we already do that. If you asked, hey, do we do that, it would have been a different approach. So it's approach. And again, the appointments, John and Jim, you guys had the experience, you guys are going to do a great job. Thank you for taking those roles. And very simply, everybody have a happy and safe summer.
Thanks, Louis. Richard?
Yeah, so thank you. First off, I want to congratulate John and Jim for being elected president and vice president. Very confident that you guys are going to do a great job and continue the great work that I think the Cornwall School Board has done. I want to thank Brendan and Louis for, you know, your work as our leadership last year and Louis, four years. You know, I'm very grateful for everything you put into the position and everything you did to advance our district. So thank you. So it's summer, right? All the kids are off, enjoying the weather. I'm actually working at a summer camp now. I see a lot of our kids from Cornwall having a good time. Got to meet a lot of great kids so far, and it's just, I'm so proud of all of our students in Cornwall. It just reminds me that we have so many great, great people in our district, and, you know, that's who we serve. We have to do everything to ensure that they have the best chance possible to do everything they can to advance their futures and to achieve their goals. And I'll congratulate everyone that just got sworn in. Christine, Christian, Carl, congratulations. In my first year, there's a lot to learn. There's, you're going to realize that this is a time-consuming position, but it's worthwhile. It's very rewarding, and I just, every minute you put into it, you know that you're helping someone out there. And that's what keeps me moving, moving forward. And that's about it. I wish everybody a happy summer, and we'll see you at the, I think it's the August 13 meeting. So, thank you.
Thank you, Richard. Bass?
Thanks, John. My comments, if I want to give them a title, I'd say looking forward, a lot to look forward. Number one is looking forward to a successful school year for everybody, teachers, students, and staff. Number two, again, looking forward to starting my own second year on the board. And I can say my first year was a very good learning experience, a very humbling experience. You run to the board, I mean, for a seat on the board, thinking that... You run to the board, I mean, for a seat on the board, thinking that you're gonna solve all problems, for everybody, you think that you're gonna realize every single demand you hear from the constituents. Now, you bring these ideas, you bring, bring these concerns, you discuss them, you realize that, yeah, there are a lot of limitations, a lot of things, kind of few factors you have to consider, and I think I heard from somebody on the board already that there's always a good, I think from Louis, you made the point, there's always a good reason why something exists, or? Yeah, that, this can be more true than that, I mean, so, you have to work, you have to do your best, as one of the nine, I think I first heard that term last year from Brendan, each one of us is one of nine, I mean, we might have some very bright ideas, but again, I wouldn't be able to see that taking place unless I can convince the rest of the board to agree with me. So, so that's why I'm saying, it was a learning experience, I mean, serving on a board like, like this one, that was number two. Number three, again, looking forward, looking forward to working with the new board members, and congratulations, Christian, Christine, and Carl, looking forward to working with the new leadership, John, congratulations, and Jim, congratulations. I would say, in this new year, I would like the, the, the board members to be a little bit more involved in setting the agenda for the meetings. I felt that, you know, it was done, I mean, definitely, it is prepared between the board president and the administration, and as you see, kind of, you know, publicly, right, the agenda's, a lot of items are administrative items, right? I mean, it's, it's, it's like, say, there's no, 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 no surprise there, I just felt that the board members, and I'm talking about the rest of, not only the president, but everybody, VP and the seven others, if we can be of any help, if we can see the agenda like one week ahead of the meeting, we used to get on Friday before the Monday meeting, so maybe, I just suggest, and I'm throwing on the table, maybe we can see some, things can be done a little bit better in this new year. Then I can finish with this number four here, communication, communication is very important, communication between the superintendent and the board, I would say, and I'm not complaining, I mean, at several instances, I mean, during that year, I communicated directly with the superintendent, and every single time I sent an email, sometimes I asked for one-on-one, meaning responses just in a snap, right? And so, do not hesitate, maybe this is for the new member more than the rest, do not hesitate to initiate contact with administration represented by our superintendent, communication is very important, and always leads to good results, that's all I have.
Hey, thanks, Bass. So, just to, to try to put a bow on all those good comments there, I, I, you know, this storm that we've experienced, actually, you all experienced, I was actually in Alberta when it happened, I could tell you that trying to get back to Cornwall was almost impossible, and at point, my family was thinking, maybe we just should stop trying, but, but we, we persevered and got here, and what we found when we got here was incredible amount of people working hard, emergency crews, clearing roads, so, so, so thanks to the first responders who were trying to save people, thanks to the emergency crews that are continuing to, to, to restore the functioning road network, and thanks to all who are assisting their neighbors with the basement flooding and, and the like, I think it's at times when things are at their worst that Cornwall is at its best, and I think, over the last two days, we've all kind of had our own witness to that, so thank you all for, for that. To our new board members, congratulations, it's gonna be fun, and if it's not fun, you can blame me, I really am excited for you being part of this, they say teamwork makes the dream work, and I do, I, I value team more than anything else, and so I'm glad to have you all on the team, as I am joining the rest of our team that's been in place, and I, I know we're gonna take it to the next level. Brendan, Louis, thank you for, for your stewardship in getting us to where we are today, without that type of foundation and, and solid footing, I don't think we'd be able to, to, to take it to the next level. And just for the avoidance of doubt, when I say the next level, it's about strengthening our students, it's about growing our students, it's about helping our students in our community take pride in this experiment of public education, that's what I'm committed to, I think there are lots of values that we can, as a board, come together and agree on, to, when in doubt, find a way of how we should work together, there's always a, a way to do it better, and I'm confident that with this composition of board, we will find a better way to, to work together. So with that, let me just close by offering one thought, and it's the following, that people, and I've heard it from Christian, I think Christina mentioned it as well, people are our most valuable asset. When we lose sight of that, we lose sight of our mission and our purpose, and so I look forward to having a refocus on the people, all of us, as a collective board, as the leadership of the, of the district, as well as the faculty and staff. I think with that type of reemphasis, we're gonna have a great year, because as I said previously many times, none of us is as smart as all of us, so I look forward to serving with each and every one of you, and I look forward to continued conversations with the public. We have some homework before us, and some follow-ups, I'll get together with Terry on how we'll go about that, and thank you all. With that, I'd like to adjourn the meeting, is there a motion?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose? Thank you, everyone, have a good night.